Okay, thank you, Dave. Okay, I have seven o'clock. We will convene our meeting tonight. It's the 21st of June, first day of summer. And thank you for attending and I welcome our guests. And the first thing on the agenda is approval of our May 17 minutes. And we all received those in an email. So do we have someone that would like to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 17 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Everybody agree that say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all approved? Okay. Our zoning administration report, how about that?
I don't have a big one tonight. I keep going over all the projects with you guys and nothing has really changed. We've done nothing other than we did receive another annexation request that came into the office at the beginning of June, so it has not gone to the council yet. And it is for what we refer to as the old Cook property off of Jammer Drive, so between Susan Anne and Southwestern, back in that area.
How big, Michelle, how big is that parcel?
Thirteen point nine.
Thirteen point nine.
So we will be reviewing that in the future. And that's all I really had.
Michelle, I'm sorry, what did you say we referred to that property as?
The Cook property only because it was Mr. Cook that owned it.
Hmm. Anything exciting in the town, Steve?
I just have one item for the commission. A few weeks ago, I sent out the draft of the traffic study for the Lippi Old Town property. I'm sure within the next several weeks that the design firm will be banging at my door to see if any comments came out of the draft. If not, they will package the draft up and finish it up. So if you have any comments on that, please get back with Michelle and I and we'll pass them through. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chris, what about?
We had no meeting this month, so no report. No meeting this month, so no report.
Okay, that makes it easy then.
Makes it easy.
Okay. Well, how about Andrew? I'm sure he's got something for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This might be easier. Thank you all. Just to give you a brief update on some of the things going on over at the Carroll County Department of Planning. For the comprehensive rezoning, we are working on the ag and conservation zoning districts. Both of these zoning, the conservation and agricultural zones, went to Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission today for discussion. Also, from what I understand, and Michelle, you can correct me if I am incorrect, the last amendment for the water and sewer for Manchester was in the fall amendment of 2021?
Yes.
Okay. Also, for the 2022 spring amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan, this will be sent in August to the Maryland Department of the Environment. For the, and just a reminder to everyone, the triennial update to the 2019 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan is coming up and we have all, I believe, Michelle, we have all your information for that? And Steve? Okay. The transportation master plan, that is still ongoing, that is ongoing. The annual report, the final information for the Carroll County annual report is due to MDE by July 1st. Also, for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, Public Safety has been working with multiple county agencies. And we have met with Rodney Koontz last month to go over Manchester's portion. So we have all that we need from Manchester. And the county is finishing up scheduling with a couple other municipalities, but as far as Manchester is concerned, everything is good to go. So thank you. If you have any questions, let me know. And I'm, and if, I know some of the members I haven't seen yet, if you would like my contact information, if you have any questions, I can get that to you at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think your email didn't go through when I sent you a note.
Huh.
For some reason, I don't know why.
What I'll do is I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay. I just wanted to welcome you aboard and I didn't get a chance to do that.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there still a gray at carrollcountymd.gov?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, the main subject tonight is the Mavic Solar Program. Who wants to?
Larry, before we go, I'll make my usual, I have to recuse myself from any comments on this project.
Okay, well, we recognize you there, but we don't recognize. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to speak for it.
Okay.
I'm Abe Bennett with SGC Power. We're one of the developer, we're the developer making this project. Along with me, we have John Shields, our project manager, sitting in the back, and Ted Hayes, our civil engineer, to answer any questions you may have.
I think, Bob, you had some questions or comments you wanted to put forth tonight?
So my understanding is the current proposal is seeking to not put landscaping in along the Hill property, is that correct?
On the Earl Lamott property?
Along the northern common border with Marty Hill.
Yes, that's correct. Due to the array being set approximately 300 feet back from that boundary line.
You're at a relatively similar contour elevation to those proposed houses.
That's correct.
It's a tough one for me.
To maintain as much farmland for the landowner as possible. And due to the setback, it is a relatively similar elevation, but due to that, you know, the long distance setback, maintain as much usable area remaining as possible.
I understand and appreciate that. Also, looking out for the citizens in the area. I don't have as much of a problem with the landscaping around the Lamott property. I mean, that's an internal property line, in my opinion, basically. I, I'm kind of on the fence with this one, gentlemen. You know, we talked long and hard about landscaping for the betterment and protection of the neighbors.
You're talking current residents and those to come, new houses being built.
Yeah, we just approved those a couple years ago.
Which they are getting ready to be built because I've got the public works agreement in the works and a letter of credit. They're coming.
It appears you have a internal setback, maybe 30 feet from the fence to your closest solar panels, is that correct?
I believe it's 20.
Twenty.
That's probably all the source. Maybe 30, no?
Yeah.
Does it vary per installation? It does, just because of where your array is, so.
Okay, so between 20 and 30 feet, I don't have a problem. For the board, I would be more comfortable if we had some trees through there. I would be fine with a single line of trees alternate, you know, not as densely populated as what we have here within that zone. Would be kind of a compromise that I think could be achieved and meet the spirit and intent should they be able to without adversely affecting your solar performance, which is obviously the most key here. We're talking about being on the north side, so there'd be no solar influence there. That's Dale, Larry, I mean, I'm just kind of looking, that's kind of what I'm thinking as a compromise here to meet the spirit of the landscaping requirement, but not adversely affect the agricultural ground, which is obviously key for our community. So I'm trying to come up with a balance here. And with that, I would say that we could move from the northern strip all the way around to the Loski property, so come around along property. That's a suggestion that I think we could probably do. So that would be the first house to the western north of Lamott's on Crafton.
Are you talking about planting immediately behind the neighbors?
I'm talking about removing plants all the way around Lamott, all the way up the common property line with Hill. But then planting along the northwest, the northwest fence.
Okay.
To meet the spirit and intent of shielding the solar farm from the neighboring properties.
Would there be an option, and I'm not sure that we'd want to propose this, but would there be an option, Steve?
Excuse me, can you just hold the microphone then? Because none of this is getting recorded if you're not somewhere near.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would there be an option to ask the landowners if they prefer to have landscaping in the rear of their yard as opposed to planting it out by the array?
Which properties are you speaking to?
I don't know, I thought that's what you said.
Hill, Hill, and Ridgely.
There's not enough depth there from, based on the site plan we have previously approved. They're at a minimum setback through there.
Okay.
I think the options, as I see it, it's either on the farm ground, on the common property line, on the farm ground outside the fence, or just inside the fence is kind of where I see the options for planting there.
Inside the fence would be difficult for maintaining emergency service access around the array inside the fence. So that would be a difficult proposition. And already, we're very tight on space in this particular location because we had to keep within the town boundaries here.
I understand.
If you do end up requiring landscaping along that side, could we confer with Gary Lamott and see whether he would prefer adjacent to our fence line or adjacent to the western boundary of the parcel?
That's, it could be either or, in my opinion.
Now, you're concerned because, you know, I envision planting trees that grow really, really wide versus some that stay narrow, or?
I'm not concerned with the width, I'm concerned with the height and the proximity to our, to our array, and then the landowner preference on where he'd prefer something if something has to go in.
Okay.
And the interconnection line.
Right.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The interconnection line.
Yep. That one doesn't appear on the landscape plans, okay. Ah, okay. Comment to add that to the landscape plan, be helpful.
Yeah, outside of recommendations for landscaping, are there any particular requirements for landscaping?
The requirements, according to our ordinance, are twice the required landscaping for any solar projects.
Yeah. Or as approved by the planning board.
Okay.
Which is why I was saying, I was willing to go down to a narrower section, more in keeping with the ordinance, to reduce that footprint. And it could be in either of the locations. And then transmission's all overhead, isn't it?
Yeah, BGE's switched to requiring overhead.
I mean, I might have recommended more, but I like Bob's idea of some kind of compromise.
Yeah, those houses, when those houses are built, they are going to be literally 20 feet off the property line on that side. So they're going to be having quite a view.
Right.
Can I speak? Don't have a comment?
Absolutely.
For you, Gary Lamott, 48, Southeastwood, Marco Island, Florida. The owner of the property had been for approximately 25, 30 years off and on. Michelle, can you refresh my memory? On the R40, what is the minimum landscaping on an R40 lot?
We don't, I don't set that. It's what's, um, I'm just trying to make.
I mean, each project is approached differently. I thought it was X amount of trees on an R40 lot, and to meet the town ordinance, we need to double that.
Correct.
And that's all set by the county. They do all of our landscaping review.
Because if you look at the project overall, and I just counted it up, on the section that'll be on the far north, northwest side, there's over 90 trees going to be put on that parcel there. Against the Hill and the other property, we're over 300 feet away from that property line. And that's an R7500 on that property. They are, they're going to require to have landscaping in their backyard on an R7500 area. The one property was completely wooded, it just was being cleared about a year ago.
I would have to pull their plan and see what the requirements were for that site.
And the other problem is being involved with the farming operation, you're looking at probably a minimum of 40 feet if you're going to stagger the trees. If you're looking at 40 feet and approximately 300 feet, maybe 400 feet across there, you're looking at, you know, 120,000, no, 300 times 40, you know, 12,000 square feet of area that's going to be taken out of farming and put into nothing but tree, put into trees for landscaping. But one of the reasons we kept that back to 300 feet was to keep as much in agricultural production as property as possible.
Appreciate that.
to black vinyl coated fence along there, and maybe slats inside the fence would suffice to obscure the view?
How tall is the fence for that area?
Eight feet.
Eight.
There's black, the vinyl coated black fence is on the side where the residential lots are at. Everything else is going to be the ag fence. So there's actually two different types of fences that we're proposing.
So are you proposing slats or are you proposing scrim?
Whichever you'd prefer.
One thing that comes to mind is concern over wind load on it, but.
I'm sorry, would you please describe again your concerns with the trees and what it inhibits? When I gave the example of being too wide, you said it was the height that would be more of a concern.
So the height is a concern for shadowing of the array. The taller it is, the more likely it is to cast a shadow. Now, in this location, we're in the northwest side of an array, so it's going to be a very minimal impact, so it's not a major impact. I wouldn't want to plant 100-foot trees along there, but, you know, 15-foot trees should be fine. The width, we're not as concerned for the width with it impacting the array, however, we are concerned with the overall tree width as it impacts the farming field and the agricultural operations. So we don't, we'd prefer to keep narrower, shorter trees.
Well, BGE actually don't allow you to have trees underneath interconnection. Ask them if you got a question.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah, I don't think they'll allow you to do that.
Now, BGE requires at least 15 feet on either side of their easement to keep clear for their access. So we may run into an issue now that Ted brought this up where we can't place trees in there because of the BGE interconnection path. Good call.
Which is why we need that arrayed line to show all these plans.
It's called out as MVOH, that's medium voltage overhead on sheet three.
On the cover sheet.
Oh, yeah, it's not on the cover sheet.
Not on the landscape plan. The line doesn't appear on the landscape plan.
It's on the cover sheet and it's on the sheet three site plan.
Should be on town to town.
And it should be on the, yeah, sheet 10 landscape plan, it should be on all of them. And it should be on the, yeah, sheet ten landscape plan, it should be on all of them.
I think what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see an option for, um, screening within the fence. I'd also like to see a sketch of what landscaping could be incorporated, maintaining BGE's fifteen-foot other, either side of the transmission line within the array fencing. See what you can do, and then also show a detail for, um, screening within the fence, those two options.
When you say screening within the fence, do you mean, like, in line with it, slats?
Slats.
Okay. Okay. Is there a kind of slat design or material specification or color that you'd prefer?
It would either be black or like a forest green, something that's going to basically kind of blend itself out. We don't want, you know, white walls sticking up down through there, you know, where it's going to look rather odd in its placement, so.
Sure.
Any other comments? Any other comments, Bob? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get back with you. Okay, thank you much. Any public comment out there at all? None at all?
I had a question for the commission. One of the things I noticed when I was going over the plans is that some of the fencing is in the setback. Is that something you want to allow since we did state that setbacks were twice the normal, of course, with all, for all structures and all associated equipment? Is the fencing considered that or not?
The intent? The intent at the time was not that fencing was excluded from that zone. Fencing would follow normal setback standards.
Gotcha.
That it was, it was primarily to the actual physical array, support structures, cabinets, et cetera.
That's all, I don't need to ask.
Any other comments at all? Okay, we'll just call it, call it an evening, well, seven-thirty, well, adjourned. Does anybody?
I'll make a motion that the meeting be adjourned.
Just a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made in a second, we'll adjourn at seven-thirty, thank you very much.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just, I thought we were still talking about, was there any other comment on the Mavic solar project? If you're talking about any other comment at all, I do have a comment.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, come on, we've got lots of time.
Again, Gary Lamott, Marco Island, Florida. I'm also the, was the original builder of the Westchester Square office project on Route twenty-seven. And last month, I noticed that they approved the, um, entrance into Equine Meadows as far as dealing with any stormwater management problems, and the gentleman, the engineering firm, basically came up with a scenario that, uh, we had, they, over the course of time, there's been twenty acres that had been removed from the seventy acres that drains down through the, um, Park Avenue, Westchester Square, Old Manchester Road, and comes to my property. For lack of a better term, I think the presentation that he gave you, uh, was a lot of smoke and mirrors. I have documents here, I'm sorry, I don't have enough to go around for everybody, of letters that I have written to the town over the past, first time is two thousand and nine, or two thousand and nine, concerning the drainage with Westchester Square, drainage running off to Westchester Square. And also, that's the two thousand and eleven, this is the two thousand and nine letter that was given to the town. When we had other drainage issues coming down through there. I don't know if you want me to read it line by line, what was submitted on, in two thousand and nine, and also again on two thousand and eleven of issues that we had and property damage that was caused by stormwater coming off of Park Avenue down onto the Westchester Square property and causing thousands of dollars worth of damage on two separate occasions. Both of these occasions have occurred after this supposedly twenty acres of area was taken out of the seventy acres of drainage. I know that you approved it last month, I was not available. Like I said, I live in Florida, I notified the president of the condo association, he wasn't available to attend. I spoke with Steve several times, several times concerning the drainage issue there, and I thought that they were going to be, um, have to manage their drainage on their property, not let it run free like it does now. And my concern is, we've, we've had two major incidents of flooding coming on to this property. Them, I have no problem with the developer developing the property, it's his property, he deserves to get his, uh, developed as he sees fit. I do have an issue with the drainage coming on down Westminster Street, running on our property, jumping the curb, the culvert that is there is not sufficient to handle it. Uh, we had, uh, the one major storm, our storm drain had clogged. Doctor, Manchester Family Medicine Building wound up with three inches of water in the building at that time. North Carroll Rec Council had about an inch of water in the building at that time. The storm drains clogged, it backed up, came into the parking lot, our ponds filled within a short period of time overflowed, and actually sent water down, additional water down onto Route twenty-seven, uh, where PNC Bank used to be. That building also had flood damage. I don't know what the answer is, but it, sending more water our way is not the answer. I'm sure that, I, I don't know the proper procedure as far as you approved it, does it go back to the county for their review now, uh, for the final stormwater management on that property? But we've paid for it twice, I don't think we'll pay for it a third time. And I guess my question is, where does the liability fall? Does it fall on the, the town? Does it fall on the developer? Does it fall on the engineer who said that this system will work as designed? I'm telling you, my personal experience in being involved with that project, and for over thirty years, it will not handle the water coming on to the property. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for me? And th- these should be in your file someplace. They were never brought up to the town council or to the, the planning and zoning meeting. Well, I delivered both, Hank, Harry, both of these to the town.
I know that one of them was, when the stormwater mansion was done for that property, it was the grate there that comes off of Westminster Street, and then it was the sheet across the parking lot. So, by building that little wall where they park now, I know that that interfered a little bit with it. But we have talked to the developer on Equine Meadows, and they claim that they're going to be getting most of the water that's coming out in their stormwater management pond, and that, that's why it won't be as much coming over to you. But we did put the approval in with the developer being responsible until that development is completely done.
Well, the, the presentation that he gave the other week was, we have removed twenty acres from the seventy acres that drains down through there by the two subdivisions up on Hill that now manage their stormwater on site. And like I say, I can, with the damage that has occurred, these, both of these storms that damaged our property have occurred after those developments were built. So, we still have a lot of water coming down through there that is not being managed. And I say, the Manchester Family Medicine was probably eight to ten thousand dollars for the damage to that building.
But he will have his own stormwater management pond on Equine Meadows.
Okay. The issue is, I think, and what he's trying to get a variance on, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I've never seen the drawings, is the, uh, improvements that he needs to make on Park Avenue and not maintaining that water? Is that correct?
Run that bonding one more time, Garrett.
The variance that he was, uh, asked planning and zoning for, was that to not to maintain the water that comes off of Park Avenue? In other words, he's going to have to widen the road there and I guess do a D cell lane to get into it. Uh, where is that stormwater management facility going to be when he widens that road and adds additional impervious surfaces?
That's all going to be handled on his site, with the exception of, it gets to a point where it will have, if it breaches, of course, or goes out the emergency overflow, it would come into the town's system. And that was a question that was brought up, well, you know, if you're not going to put any water into the town's system, why are you expanding your off-site stormwater system?
But if he widens Park Avenue, is he going to have a stormwater pond there to handle the additional paving on Park Avenue?
Uh, the additional paving that he's going to have, it will increase a small amount, but I don't, I don't think that would have any bearing on that. I mean, he asked to widen Park Avenue a section, but I don't think... The square footage of that, uh...
The widening of Park Avenue is significantly consumed by the sidewalk and tree panel. There's not a huge footprint increase of, as I recall, to the actual travel lanes of the roadway.
Right.
That's correct.
And the pond is immediately up gradient of that sidewalk that's going to be installed along Park Avenue.
Well, I just hope we don't have any more flooding coming on to the Westchester property. If not, uh, I don't know what the course of action be taken, but we, we've, um, had several incidents there that, uh, insurance companies don't pay for surface water, so it was out of pocket for everybody that was concerned. Just wanted to make you aware that these documents have been submitted to the town over the years concerning that, and I didn't think that the board was, uh, aware of that at the meeting last month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you. I think we can take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second the motion.
And, oh, in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.